And Public Relations at Peralta Community College District. Welcome to our town hall, our virtual town hall meeting to help answer your questions about how the novel coronavirus and COVID-19 pandemic are impacting the Peralta Community Colleges and your classes. I have 11:30 right now. We'll wait another minute or two to allow a few more people to dial in. I'm seeing that several of our participants have signed in and I am very appreciative of that. Hello Spencer?
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning. Let's see, and I saw Israel. I am unmuting you, Israel.
Thank you. Hello. Good morning.
I'm looking for Max. All right. Well, let's get the show on the road, shall we? It's 11:31. Again, my name is Mark Johnson. I'm the interim Executive Director of Marketing Communication and Public Relations at the Peralta Community College District. Welcome. Thank you very much for joining us at this virtual town hall meeting. We wanted to give you, the students in the Peralta Community Colleges, Berkeley City College, College of Alameda, Laney College, and Merritt College, the chance to speak with administrators at the district so we can answer your questions about how COVID-19 is impacting your coursework. I am going to advance the slide. So you should be seeing the agenda we have today. I will, in a moment, I will turn it over to our Chancellor, Dr. Regina Standback-Straub, to say a few welcoming statements. I'm really pleased that we could be joined by students and by administrators from the district. And after we do introductions and welcome, we'll dive right into question and answers. I've set it up so that you could submit your questions through chat. We are also simultaneously broadcasting on Peralta's YouTube channel. And colleagues are monitoring the chat in YouTube and communicating those questions to us here so that we can try and get those questions answered for you today. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chancellor Standback-Straub. And I'm in the process of unmuting.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, on behalf of the Peralta Community College Board of Trustees and the faculty, staff, and administration here at Peralta Community College District, I want to thank you for joining us in this virtual town hall. I know that this time has been a time of challenge as we adjust to the changes in the way in which you're having your instruction and services be delivered and the way in which you're experiencing them, but I'm hoping that the things that we are doing and the things that you are able to do is making it such that you're able to have a successful experience. This town hall is designed more to hear from you and to answer your questions than it is to make a presentation. So with that, and just a few words advising you to continue to keep yourself safe and make sure you and your family are safe, to make sure you observe the different protocols of safety and social distancing, I want to turn it over to the panel so that they can spend as much time as possible in answering your questions. Be safe and thank you again.
Thank you Chancellor. With that, I'd like to introduce you all to our student participants. On the call, we have Max Frinkie, who is the Associated Student President for Berkeley City College. Max, I think I have just unmuted you.
Hello, everybody. How's it going?
Great. Good morning, Max. We also have Spencer Staggers Elmore, who is the Associated Student President for Merritt College. Good morning Spencer. Do I need to unmute you? I hope I've unmuted you. Oh, okay. Spencer's staying muted.
There we go. Good morning, everyone. Okay, that's all good. Happy to see everyone that is here and I'm happy to be the student participant for today.
Thank you Spencer. I'd also like to welcome Israel Kazan, who is the Associated Student President for College of Alameda. Israel, good morning.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Nice seeing you.
Fantastic. Also on our call is Dr. Siri Brown. She is the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Student Success. And I'm unmuting you, Dr. Brown. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Glad to be here. And a special thanks to the student body presidents who are joining us today. Congratulations to Spencer for what we hear that he got accepted to UC Berkeley. And we're really proud of him and all of you. Happy to be here today.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Also joining us is Dr. Mia Kelly. She is the Director of the Peralta Health Services Center. Good morning, Dr. Kelly.
Good morning, everyone. I hope that all is well and that everyone is staying safe.
Thank you. And also joining us this morning is Dr. Carla Walter, who is the new Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration at the district. Good morning, Dr. Walter. Oh. I thought I was unmuting you, but I was muting you. Sorry about that.
Okay. Now I think I'm unmuted. Good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Walter. Thank you for joining us. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Max to ask the first question of the day. Max, the ASBCC President from Berkeley City College.
Hi. The first question that I have from students who I've spoken to within the past few weeks is can students still receive free food from the BCC food pantry? And can they still receive free food at locations on other campuses as part of the Peralta District?
Thank you, Max. That's a great question. I'm going to steer that question to Dr. Stacy Shears. She is the Acting President at Berkeley City College. Dr. Shears, would you like to address that?
Sorry about that, Max. So you wanted to know what kind of emergency assistance? Is that?
Yeah, well, the BCC food pantry used to provide food, I believe, every Monday to low-income students. They could get a grocery bag and go to BCC's Health and Wellness Center and request a grocery bag full of food. And I'm wondering if they still have that opportunity?
Right. So because the college is closed right now, we're not operating the same food pantry that we've been operating. But we do, we are partnering with Berkeley Food Network. And we're very close, I believe, in early May, we'll be able to let students know where they can go to the Berkeley Food Network warehouse, which is at like Ninth and University, where they can go and get a grocery bag of food. They just, we have to also figure out a way to get them a few volunteers because they're needing some help with that. But that's one way that students can get food, low-income students can get food assistance. And the other way that we've been helping students online is through our food, emergency food assistance for $100 grocery gift card to Trader Joe's or Safeway. And I believe we've probably given about almost half of what we've got allocated for that. But we do have a link on our website and John Nguyen is a good point of contact for that.
Thank you, Dr. Shears. Dr. Shears, we also have Dr. Tameel Gilkerson, the President of Laney Colleges on the line. Dr. Gilkerson, would you like to add a few comments about food distribution there?
Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
You're unmuted. No, that's all right. So thank you so much for the question, Max. I really appreciate it. I know this is a really difficult time for a lot of students and particularly because we were offering so much food support for our students. So at Laney College right now, I can respond on behalf of the college. We are doing lunch distribution on Mondays and Wednesdays right now from 12 o'clock to 2:00 PM. It's a drive-up and walk-up option where students can receive meals that are provided through the World Food Kitchen and the Eat Play Learn Foundation, who are partnering with local restaurants to keep them in business and also provide these meals to our students. So we did our first distribution yesterday and will continue again next Monday for the foreseeable future.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Gilkerson. I know that there are also, that College of Alameda is also working with Steph Curry's charity to provide some food distribution services. So those options are definitely out there. Thank you very much for the great question, Max. I'd like to move on to Spencer Staggers Elmore from Merritt College.
Good morning. Actually, I want to start off by saying I'm not the only one who was accepted to UC Berkeley. So Max and Israel both were accepted as well. So my other constituents were accepted. I know Max accepted. I know Israel's waiting for other participants, but I wanted to put that out there first. My question for today, after I talked to a couple of students, is since the reform of AB 705, we noticed a lot of statistics in English classes have support classes now. Like a lot of the entry-level classes have support classes. And a student I was talking to was concerned because when they were enrolling to those classes earlier this semester, they had a hard time enrolling into them along with the original class. So they're wondering if that process is still going to be difficult to enroll into classes that have support classes now that everything is moved online? So that's my question.
Good question. Dr. Brown, is that something you'd like to address?
Yes. I'm not sure why students were having a challenging time the first time. It may have been a technical issue on our end just in that moment in time. However, the system that we've had in the past is the same system, even though we're now delivering instruction online. And so as students are registering for summer and fall, they will see what we call linked courses like that, the linked support courses where a student would be required to sign up for both the lab that's there intended to help the students be successful and the core English or math course. All of this, as you mentioned, directly related to AB 705. So to answer, you know, there shouldn't be technical problems with it. If there are any issues that students have, they can send an email to admissions@peralta.edu or reach out to their college counselor and we would address it immediately. And oh, and I love to be corrected when more students, student leadership were accepted to UC Berkeley. So congratulations to all of you all.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And yes, indeed, congratulations. I'd like to turn the floor over to Israel Kazan, the ASCOA President. Israel?
I'm ready. Hello. Good morning again. So I did receive a petition from the Poor People's Campaign of Laney College. And they had several meetings compiling the student concerns across the Peralta District. And Mark, I don't know if it's feasible for you to share the screen, to share this petition so that the asks of the students in all four colleges can be shared to all of us and we can look through it?
When I went to the link that you shared, Israel, I didn't get any, that page was unable to load. So if you don't mind just talking us through it?
For sure. I'll do that. For the meantime, I sent it to you again, hoping it will work, but sure. Yes. So I think a question is, this is a multi-pronged petition, but I'll do my best to ask the first question. So these students are concerned with regards to receiving a refund on classes that they can no longer continue. So where is the district in terms of refunds?
Dr. Brown?
We are in the process of working on the back-end processes for issuing refunds to students for enrollment fees and 50% prorated parking pass fees. So you may know that there are some students who paid all their fees this semester and some who did not. And so if students have not paid their fees this semester, then the refund would be applied to the balance that's still owed. And as soon as we have information available to students to say, okay, this is happening now, then an announcement will go out. It is, there is a back-end process that is, takes a little bit of time. And so we know that students are wondering about this. You can definitely know that we are reimbursing, we are refunding students who received or opted for the EW grade from 3/10, March 10, through the end of the term. And we're in process of doing that. So I'm just repeating myself, but again, there will definitely be a formal announcement that goes out. And, but I want students to know that what's really key is that each of the colleges does have emergency funding grants for students. And students, as you heard earlier, are already applying for those grants. There are different categories for some of them, but there are gift cards, grocery cards, food delivery, like you heard mentioned, and cash that goes right onto the Students' Bank mobile if you're a financial aid student. And there are more student-related grants that are on their way. So while we are working on the back-end process that is taking some time, please know that you can go to each of the college websites, to the college that you're attending, and find the information about how to apply for grants and keep up on that as well. So I hope that answers the question and there will be more information to come.
Thanks. Thank you.
And with that, we'll rotate back to Max at Berkeley City College.
Hi. One question I have from some students that I've spoken to is what is the plan for instruction for the coming fall? And will fall instruction be online or in person?
Dr. Brown?
Okay, yeah, that's a great question. I know it's on the minds of many students. We have not made any final decision about that. We're still continuing to follow the guidelines from the state and from the county. And you'll, again, you'll see another formal announcement about that once the final decision has been made. Like all of you are noticing, there's lots of different information that's going on around safety and COVID-19. And so the decision-making process is happening within the guidelines of the state and the county. And, but do know that students can register now for summer and fall, as well as our spring intercession courses that still have availability so that you can at least begin to plan on what it is that you're going to take for a spring intercession, summer or fall, and talk to your counselor to make sure that you're following your SCP and, you know, are on track for your career and educational goals.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Brown. I wanted to circle back to Israel's question, which was about a change.org request. And part of that was about refunds, but also part of it was about changing the grades. And this particular petition proposes all As. I know that we somewhat addressed that in our April 1st session, but Dr. Brown, would you like to comment on that again?
Yeah, I appreciate that students are exercising their right to petition and to request for things that they deem worthy. We cannot assign all As to students. That's not something that we do. Grading is, however, much more flexible this semester, like we talked about at the last Student Hall, the EW grade. And there are 1,400 students who have taken advantage of the EW grade thus far. And we send out information about the pass/no-pass option that students can request from their faculty. The ed code is really clear that assigning a grade is the right of the faculty and is based on student work and as outlined in the syllabus. And so if students have concerns about their grades, certainly they should be communicating directly with their faculty, especially if they're experiencing problems, you know, family problems, work-related problems, technical problems in this challenging time period. But as a last resort, students can opt for the EW grade. And remember that that does not have a negative consequence on the student's financial aid or ability to repeat the course or on their GPA. So it's an option to take if a student is concerned about failing a course. And then they can re-enroll in that course when things have settled down. They can hopefully reach out to the college if they need a laptop or they're having internet challenges and then start that class again when things feel more secure for the student.
Just a follow-up question, Dr. Brown. Is, so this semester, we're still going by the grading system, A, B, C, D. And so pass/no-pass, as you've said, is an option, given that we communicate it to the faculty that teaches the class?
Correct. And thank you for clarifying that because a few people have asked that. All the same grading options that are normal, A, B, C, D, F, as well as EW and pass/no-pass if they communicate the desire for that to their faculty and the faculty agrees. Remember, though, that it's really important with the pass/no-pass option that you first talk to your academic counselor. Because the CSUs and the UCs did send out information, which we posted on safe.peralta.edu. They sent information on the pass/no-pass grade options, but they both make it clear that depending on your major and the course, that you want to be careful with choosing this option. So talk to your counselor, communicate with your faculty, make the informed decision on whether or not the pass option is the best option for you, for your particular major at your particular time in your matriculation. And then that way, you make the best decision for where you're headed for transfer or for degree.
And I had another question. Do we have any clear dates on when a student can still select pass/no-pass or an EW? Is there any kind of, because I have a student here was saying they're getting a lot of conflicting information from their instructors.
Okay, yeah, I've communicated with the faculty and I will definitely send another communication because there is a lot of information going around. So it's a lot for all of us to keep track of. For faculty and students, information is on safe.peralta.edu. And a student can request the pass/no-pass all the way up to the final week or finals week. And again, the faculty does not necessarily have to grant it because grading is at the purview of the faculty, but they have up to that time. Now, the EW grade and the pass/no-pass grade options for all faculty are in the dropdown menu. When faculty go to assign grades after final exams have been graded, they go into their faculty center and there's the dropdown menu for each student that asks them to select A, B, C, D, or F, or I for incomplete. In this case, it's A, B, C, D, F, I, EW, pass, no pass. So all faculty will see that option in there and then select that for student, the student based on the student performance and whether or not the pass/no-pass option was granted to the student. But I will send another communication to faculty. And if any student has any question about it, I've gotten emails, and I'm not the only one, but I've gotten emails from students like, hey, my teacher and I are not sure about this. And then I'll just email the student back as well as email the faculty to help clear up any confusion about the grading options. But this semester, everything around grading that we've just discussed is very flexible. It's not the normal way. In the future, you will not see the EW or the pass/no-pass option for all courses. We're just doing this semester to accommodate the crisis that is upon students and the challenges that they may be facing with completing courses online. Thank you so much.
Spencer, it's your turn in the rotation.
Yep, I can guess that too. So for my question, it's from a Merritt College student. The student is saying, I'm currently a nursing student at Merritt. We're literally, they literally have 25 days away from graduation and we got the bombshell this morning that we are not graduating on time. What is being done in order for the students to meet all necessary requirements at this time? And I guess this is really purview to nursing students as well, since they have very strict requirements in order to graduate.
Not sure if that's for you, Dr. Brown, or for you, Dr. Kelly?
It may actually be for, I'm not sure if the President of Merritt College is on or Dr. David Johnson, or if the Vice President of Instruction Denise Richardson is on.
Let's see, Dr. Johnson appears to be.
I'm on. Trying to see if I can, where am I?
We can hear you.
You can't see me, but you can hear me. Yes, thank you for the question. Yeah, and it's really, really challenging and unfortunate, the situation that's occurred for students in nursing, students in Rad Tech, for example, in allied, allied health areas. So unfortunately, this is the ramification of the situation that we're in. What we're doing is providing students the opportunity Uh what we're doing is providing students the opportunity in some of the capstone classes in their areas. At the end of um at the beginning of next month. To um do some hands-on kind of um, for lack of a better term, bootcamp training to uh continue their education. But the reality is for those classes that we can't uh continue to um offer in that modality. We're gonna have to bring students back and have them finish um finish over the summer or 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 during the fall term. It's just. The unfortunate reality. I've had a conversation with many of the uh students and faculty in that area. And this is one of the unfortunate um consequences. Um we did for a moment. Consider um in terms of some of the lab hours that the nursing students uh would need to complete. In order to meet uh the requirements for graduation, we did briefly consider um. And allowing students to um work in some of the clinics to respond to the clarion call by the governor. Uh to uh join the fight against COVID nineteen and thereby get meet some of their hour requirements. But after discussing it with the faculty and some of the students, we thought it was best not um imperil. The student's health uh unnecessarily. And so uh forestalling their graduation was the result of that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Israel, it's over to you.
Sure, thank you. So um I'll go defer to Max and uh Spencer. And I would like to invite the students that if you have questions, please do chat me and I'll read them out. Thank you.
So we did have a a a question from uh Susan. Susan had her hand open, I mean her hand up. Let's see if I can unmute you, Susan. Are you with us?
Hi, this is Susan. Dr. Brown, I have a question about the EW election. In the last town hall meeting, we were informed. Formed that we could view until March two thousand twenty-one. Is that option still in effect?
Okay, um, thank you for that question. Um. Yes, yes, that's still an option. So the way the EW works even prior to the crisis. Is that um if there are circumstances beyond the student's control. Um like they uh have a family member who's really ill, they've had to take care of, or they've had some kind of. Um unfortunate major health crisis themselves, or they were um um institutionalized or just, you know. Circumstances beyond a student's control, what the law said for this new grade option. Um was that students would submit documentation. Uh of uh as proof of what is happening and then we could grant an EW grade. And that a student had up to a year from the semester in which they are requesting the the change to the EW grade. That form and that process uh doesn't have, doesn't involve the faculty, doesn't involve the college administration. It comes right to the district. Uh admissions and records. So it's directly from the student to district um admissions and records. And um and so while we're in the crisis, the law still applies in the sense that. Um you can, a student can request the EW grade for any courses this semester from March tenth on. Um um and request that EW grade. And we would know that it's related to the COVID nineteen crisis. No documentation is required uh for this spring only because we know that it's related to the COVID nineteen crisis. Um and they can, students can submit that form all the way up to the end of spring twenty twenty-one. And so um the answer to your question is yes, that's a really, it's really important for students to know that. Um what we've been communicating to faculty is. Um if you haven't heard from your students and they're not logging in to your remote or online forms of 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 learning. Um that faculty are encouraged to drop them um at during the attendance verification period, which is happening this week. Uh if faculty do that, then the student will automatically receive an EW grade. And at the grading option, like we discussed, faculty can do that again. But students can do it themselves in the student portal or by um asking for the form. From admissions and records at the district website, or this form is posted on the Peralta website. It's also on safe dot E D U. Safe dot Peralta dot E D U. And so students can do, request that multiple ways. Uh but let's say that a student is trying really hard to finish the semester. They end up getting an F grade or a D grade. Or a C grade. They don't like the grade. They still have all the way up to a year to request the EW grade. And the same results apply. They can repeat the course. There's no impact on the on their GPA. Um and uh and yes.
Great, thank you. Let's see, we have a question that came in through Safe Peralta, the Ask Question Submission Form. Uh this question is from Nativedad Parsia. Uh and she asks, with the rate of the pandemic, do you see semester fall twenty twenty continuing to only take remote actions? Or do you believe that students will have the option to return to campuses?
Is that for me, Director Johnson? Yes, just like we said earlier, we know students are are wondering about this. Uh we have not made a formal decision about it. We're looking at county and state guidances around it. Um we're also communicating with our surrounding um community college districts. And as soon as we have a formal announcement or a formal decision, we will definitely communicate that out. To students via text and email as well as posted on safe dot Peralta dot E D U and the college websites.
And Mark, may I add to that? This is the chancellor. Uh may I add to that? Um Dr. Brown is exactly right. But it is, uh I do understand the question as um the chancellor of the system. Uh was uh recently speaking about the issue and he actually raised the. Uh notion that it is possible that colleges will have to look at offering remote instruction and services. Uh not only into the fall, but may have to even consider it for spring twenty-one. So we don't know because we know that there's on the one hand. At the local level and at the state level, kind of an interest and push to uh relax the shelter in place and get the economy rolling again and get people back. You know, on site, uh and and get things back in motion. But at the other hand, the state is seeing the definite successful impact of the shelter in place. Activities and the ways in which the state has approached this because of the flattening of the curve and compared to other states. When they see, we see um in other states, we see increased amounts of exposures and conf- and um. And uh diagnoses, whereas in California, you've definitely seen a flattening of the curve. So we, the 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 answer to that is while we wanna continue to follow the guidance, we just don't know. I will say that I understood or I learned, I think I recently read that uh I think Cal State Fullerton has announced that they. Are going to be fully online for the fall. I haven't seen any other announcements and then and I also participate. On a kind of a regional CEO call where we kind of um. Talk to each other about, you know, what's going on and see what what's happening between the colleges so that. Uh because we know that in this region, students have experiences with multiple colleges throughout multiple districts. And uh none of them so far have called uh fall uh to be completely online, but all of them are considering. It. One of the districts uh did announce that it was um. Uh moving toward fall being completely online, but they would develop in a shadow schedule. Which if we did have the shelter in place um orders relaxed, they would be able to quickly put up. Some face-to-face instruction. Uh but uh at this point, uh they are developing primarily a schedule for online in the fall. So we'll we'll uh consider it here in our district and uh definitely post uh. And uh keep the um conversations going and engage the constituencies as well as the students in order for us to make the best decision. For the fall of uh twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. We have uh about seven minutes left. Uh we have another question that came in through Safe Peralta Ask. Uh this question is from Ada. Uh Ada uh. Um notes that we've discussed tuition reimbursement. Uh her question is, will students be reimbursed for spring twenty twenty parking permits and AC transit passes? Um obviously, uh students with those services uh didn't get a chance to use them um throughout the entire semester. Uh Dr. Brown?
For parking, um as I mentioned earlier, we are uh refunding fifty percent prorated. Of parking fees uh for students who purchase parking passes. Um when the COVID nineteen uh crisis hit us, we were at the the fifty percent mark of the term. Uh but for AC transit, we are not uh providing refunds for that because um. The you can still use your AC transit pass and um and and so. There's no need for a refund for it.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We have another question from Peralta Ask. Thank you very much for everybody who is using Peralta, Safe Peralta. Uh ask to submit their questions. Uh this question is from Michelle. Uh Michelle asks, is there a plan for virtual graduation? Uh will we receive notice if we are eligible uh for graduation since we submitted the petition? Dr. Brown?
Uh yes, all four colleges are doing uh their own um virtual graduations. And students who have petitioned for graduation will be hearing about the details of that. And and also the four colleges are all are considering uh doing a December graduation that's in person if we're able to. At that time. So look for information uh to come from your college. Uh student life directors and vice presidents of student services about the details for that. And congratulations uh to you. I'm sure you're asking because you've you're you've petitioned to graduate, so we're we're proud of your success in that.
That's awesome. So just a follow-up question, um Dr. Brown. With the tentative December graduation, this is for. Um the folks graduating this semester, spring twenty twenty.
Correct. Yeah, because um you know, the virtual is gonna be a great option. Um so that um there's acknowledgement and there's a a celebration, but it's never the same as in person. And so um uh college presidents are looking at options for December, but of course, all of that depends on the safety protocols. Um and a decision wouldn't be made until much later about that.
Great, thank you, Dr. Brown. I believe we have time for one more question. Uh Lily?
Yes.
You had raised your hand. Thank you very much. Uh the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Lily Leung. I'm a library technician too at the Laney College Library. I just wanted to um let you all know that. Um uh the library staff and um. And myself have um, you know, like verified the um students um on the Chrome for the Chromebook project. And also, you know, to uh let the students know that uh the students can check out um the library's webpage. Uh for the uh e-textbook. So I just wanted to uh, you know, let them know, uh let the students know that um if the students uh have any questions, you know, they can. Uh feel free to email, you know, me or any of uh the library staff.
Thank you, Lily. I actually have a question that came in through um Safe Peralta Ask. Uh which is for uh Merritt College Library. Uh and the question is, is there anything that can be done for future use of reserve books online? Uh when the library was open, the student used the physical books that were on reserve. Um is there a a way to make those physical reserve books available in an online format?
I I wanna answer that by saying I meet with the like the head librarians um on a regular basis, all four of them. And I think that is a great suggestion. It's not something that um that has come that I even thought about or that I've heard people think about. So um let me contact the librarians and let's figure out a way uh to make um those resources accessible. Uh for students. And so and then when we figure something out, definitely um we can send an email and a text to students. And we would ask the librarians to post it on their on their webpage.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brown. Um we've got just a few minutes left. I'd like to turn it over to our chancellor, Dr. Regina Standback Stroud uh for uh some closing comments. Uh Dr. St- uh Standback Stroud?
Uh yes, thank you, uh Mark. So thank you to all of you who have raised some very good questions. I think that it would be important for us to. Pull these questions together and add them to our frequently asked questions with some detailed answers that we've um been able to provide. Um you also have given us some suggestions that I know that we will be following through with as we look at. Um the different things that have to be worked out, some of the behind-the-scenes things that were. I wanna thank the panelists also for the uh providing the responses. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for. All of the detailed information you've been able to provide. And I know that as we do this, there'll continue to be more questions raised. Mark, thank you for hosting this this forum and I hope that we'll have many more so that people have an opportunity to just simply get their questions asked. Asked and answered. And um uh to all of the students that are attending, I I wanna wish you well, wish you luck. And um we will be uh speaking with you shortly as we continue to provide all the information we can in order for you to have a successful educational experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chancellor Standback Stroud. Thank you all to uh the participants. Thank you for dialing in. And just remember that we will be posting. Uh the video of this town hall meeting on the Peralta YouTube channel, so you can come back and view it at any time. And if there are additional questions that you have, uh please visit safe dot Peralta dot E D U slash ask. And you can submit your questions and we'll continue to monitor um uh those questions. Uh and uh keep the student FAQ that is posted at Safe Peralta updated. Thank you all very much. Uh and um have a good afternoon and be safe. Thank you.
Okay.